This time I'll call the August 31st, 2017 meeting to order for the county commission. Would you please stand and join in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First thing we have is approval of the agenda.
So move. I'll second it.
We have motion and second because there's nothing to add to it. So as is, any other questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. At this time we'll go to commission comments.
Consent agenda.
Oh, consent agenda, yes, thank you. This is the minutes of August 24th work session and regular meeting, also the minutes of August 28th campus. A wire payment to K D G of $139,404.78, abatements of $2,025.34.
I move that we approve the consent agenda. Second?
Hey, we have the motion and the second for approval of the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we will go with commissioner comments. Craig, we'll start with you.
Yeah. Two o'clock this afternoon, Janelle, I will be going to Minneapolis for the North Central Regional Planning Commission meeting. One of the high, I shouldn't say highlights, I guess. Legislators, six of our area legislators will be there, we'll be talking to them. And the other thing we're going to be talking about is our auditor, we're going to be changing auditors, seeing what we're putting that out for bids, that's all I have, Lynn.
Okay. Laverne?
We had a jury trial Monday and Tuesday this week and anyway, I just attended that to observe the proceedings of a jury trial. I've never really had been upstairs for two reasons, just to see the procedure and also observe any deficiencies that we have with the facility. And I guess I did observe several things that we've been talking about and it's, it brings it more realistically when you're actually sitting there and watching it take place. One of the things, we hear the train go by here during our commission meetings and it blows the whistle and we kind of have to stop proceedings for a little bit. But I guess I was surprised that the noise level in that courtroom up there is much more than what it is here. And because not only the whistle blowing, but the actual noise from the train. And several times during the two day period, they really just had to stop the testimony because, like I say, until the train got clear through because even the noise of the train was too much to be above the hearing. Also, I did observe, like I say, there were several times when, when they were taking breaks at noon hour or something or people, there was not a private place for, for people that were talking to the witnesses or talking to the defendant, you know, and they were standing in the hallway and I mean, you could walk by and if you really wanted to, you could have stood there and just listened to them, you know. You know, I didn't do that because I knew it was private conversations, but like I say, there's really no place for them to go. And same way as the witnesses, there was, the witnesses had to, some of them be held down here and the time they called them, it was a delay and so proceedings pretty much had to stop. And so there's just several things that I, you know, observed that until you actually see that, you, you know, people can tell you that, but until you actually see it. One other thing I wanted to bring up, it's been in the news recently out at Mead, Kansas, a prisoner got killed in the, in the Mead County Jail out there. And I did a little investigating on that and there's, they got a 45 person facility out there and I couldn't find out when it was built, but like I say, I think it could be very similar to what we have. And so anyway, I guess just to follow up on that, I'd be interested to follow up and see what happens because of somebody getting killed in the jail. And I know we're supposed to, to provide a safe environment for the inmates and I'm just concerned, the fallout that Mead County and, and the people there, the taxpayers, just what kind of obligation they're going to be under. So that might be something we can kind of, kind of watch. Like I say, you always say those are going to happen somewhere else and, and you expect that to happen in a bigger jail, in a bigger city, but when it gets real, more realistic is when it's happening in a jail is, that could be very similar to what we have here. There's another thing that, in the, in the trial this week, the one thing that was brought up that, that has bothered me, the slow moving vehicle sign that, and I kind of remember those because when I came back to farm in 1966, it became a federal law about that time that the slow moving vehicle sign, if any vehicle was going less than 40 mile an hour, that they're supposed to have one posted. And so right at the time I came home, that was a big issue and at that time, equipment dealers were not putting those signs, they weren't coming, up until that time, they were not required to be on equipment, retractors or, or equipment pulled by, slow moving vehicle sign. And so I remember that was one of my first duties when I came back to farm was equipment or equipment with the bracket and the slow moving vehicle sign. And I think right now, that's been so many years back, there's a lot of publicity about these 14 inch triangle, orange and red sign, that everybody was kind of aware of what the purpose of that sign was for. And I think we've lost contact with a lot of the general public, that they're maybe not sure what that sign is for. And like I say, I, I grew up with that, so I know whenever I see a slow moving vehicle sign that, that I know that, that it's not traveling at the posted speed of the highway, you know. And so I, I think if somebody would like to take that on as a project, is try to inform people what those signs are really for and, and I think that's, maybe we need to try to re-educate the public about those signs. Also, everybody get out and support the Labor Day activities that, that are going to be taking place, the Chisen Trail and the Labor Day activities over Chapman this weekend. So be a nice weekend for people to get out, so that's all I have.
Okay. And I do not have anything this time, so we'll go on to public comments. So if there is anything that is not on the agenda, if you'd want to make a comment or had a question, just step up to the podium, state your name and address, and then what your question or comment would be and we'll either address it or try to gather information for you. And she has it streamed live, so.
Well, watch the mouth, right?
A record of it, sure.
Yeah.
I'm Lynn Ryan, from 1312 Southwest Second Street in Abilene, Kansas. I got a number of questions. First of all, the mill levy that's already been in place, it was done many years ago, is that correct?
Four years ago.
Four years ago. And it's collecting money for this building as renovation or a new building? What was the purpose of that?
It was, when we did it originally, we put two mills back to be used to be terminal later. At that time, we had said that it was going to be for a new building, but we hadn't named it yet. So that's, that's the history of it.
Did that be used for anything else, like for renovations?
No, right, no, it was supposed to be for new construction.
New construction?
Right. That was the intent originally.
And was that voted on?
No.
It was voted on as far as just the.
The budget.
The budget that we have and we earmarked that money, you might say, which we do for specific projects that, that that gives us the ability to, you know, research and do some, architect whatsoever.
I agree with all of you.
Yeah, so that was kind of the.
And then Tim Moran was the, on the paper then, and there was three weeks in a row that that was in the paper back four years ago. I mean, so it wasn't, we didn't try to hide it or anything.
That's, I, I'm fully in for.
No, I know, but I mean, yeah, I mean, people, we hear people say that.
That's a good starting point of, of the conversation, sure.
Yeah, because the Harvey thing in Texas put $10 billion away for a slush fund. I heard they go, oh my God, they're thinking ahead and we're thinking a little ahead too.
Don't call it slush.
Two percent, not really enough.
So, okay, any other couple of other questions or?
Yeah. What's the, what's the next plan for this, this building? Because we got to get it renovated or fixed, where is the money coming from all that?
And maybe we could go through all your questions and then go back and pick them up if, if it's a reasonable list here.
I'm just curious to know what's the next plan, because this place is going to get fixed, replaced, addition to, and I'm all for what you had in plan. I had some, Teresa and I was at a potluck dinner, card party in Harrington at the senior center on Main Street yesterday. And I asked the people, there's a bunch of them there, and I asked them about what happened with this vote, what you guys think about it. So I ain't paying no more taxes. They didn't, they didn't know anything, I mean, they didn't know nothing about the problems we have in this building. Nothing. That concerned me quite a bit. I know we had 34 or 35 meetings previous to the deal, Teresa and I was at three of them and had hardly any participation. And in fact, a couple of meetings, there were you guys and there was people. That concerned me. I mean, why is this happening? You did your best you could, but now I'm looking at the result like facts. I'm talking to people and I'm seeing people out there constantly don't know anything that's going to get taxed. They, they thought Justice Center was a new building, going to tear this thing down and put a new building in this place. There are all kinds of stories that was, none of what was true or, or nothing. So now I'm looking at the, the message that you guys put out. Results are, didn't work. Yes, we've been putting fingers on, even for these fingers, but results, it didn't work. That's what I want to know, what you guys plan on doing next time. My thought was, is to offer the voters a yes or no. Yes for taxes or no for no taxes. Yes renovate, cost you 22 mil. To read, to put a new building on and include a renovation, no taxes. So give them a yes or no vote, you win both ways, just my suggestion to you.
Well, I'll, some of this, I'll go ahead and, is that pretty much it or?
Yeah, that's pretty much.
Yes, okay.
That's enough for now. I got a lot more of that, that's another day.
One, just kind of going back and I remember something Brad said and then I read, Craig had said this in the paper at Chapman and, and we've had comments on this. You know, the, the biggest thing is, the problems that we were trying to address are not going away. So we, we do feel compelled that it's something that can't be ignored. And it is, it's just a matter of what is a solution that, and I think it's an opportunity for the county to come together, the county residents and, because we still need to find a solution. I talked to a few people that did have questions or misinformation, but they still recognized we had a problem, but you know, so some of it was just kind of the timing and just the way it came to a vote a second time, or through petition, the way it came to a vote through petition. There just were a few things that happened to go wrong, but we're going to have to sit down as a group commission and we certainly do want public input and so I appreciate you being here and we're going to have to formulate some sort of plan of action. But we, we didn't have anything sitting back as if it's a no vote, this is what we're going to do in the next month or so. So we're kind of at that point of developing ideas. One of the things you mentioned with your conversation with some of the group at Harrington that they did not want to pay more, that that was one of the things that was trying to rein in, there was misinformation that was going out through the rumor mill.
A lot of misinformation.
Through the rumor mill. And, and there was, it's difficult to chase all of that down and we tried to put forth factual information so people could base their decisions on that. And that's kind of a tough thing. And of course, that's going back to your early question about the two mills, that's why we set that apart, is so that could be matched up each year to take care of paying for the facility, payments and, and renovation. But, but anyway, that's, that's kind of my summary and maybe a couple of the other commissioners or Janelle would want to add something. So usually Brad is here, you're gonna.
You handled it very well, thank you.
But if you have something you want to say, Craig or Laverne?
No. And which we brought up in the work session too, is, you know, why did it, why was it just a Justice Center project? Like I said, the biggest need was for a new, or a new jail and people have been up in the courtroom before, it's not safe when the judge has to walk down through the gallery to get to the bench. The prisoners come down out of the jail through the hallway, public hallway to get into the courtroom, the other little municipal, the magistrate courtroom, when they have special cases for juveniles, they have to bring everybody out of their bill, you know, out of it, they're out in the hallway. So, and we didn't use the, the, the one we should have used for the highlight film because we didn't want to have to identify everybody that was sitting in the hallway, get their permission to, to use them as part of our film. So the one we had was, was just, there was one guy sitting down there and I think they brought four inmates in the, down the hallway. No secret, the, the jail cells do not function all the time, which, you know.
Yeah, I'm pretty much.
Yeah, well, I mean, but I mean, and that's a problem there too. We, we tried to, you know, get that idea, but you know, we're just not selling it right or, I mean, that's, you know, and it's, if we're going to take any blame for it, it's, we didn't do a good enough job of selling it to the whole community and. Go ahead, sir.
So let me leave you with this one little point. Marketing is marketing. Whenever you're marketing anything, you look at a piece of paper or a piece in advertising, the marketing thing's got to say, oh my, I got to buy this. That's the message you want to put out, just the 101 marketing. Things I heard was that they didn't know anything. Well, it's in the paper. Well, you know, newspapers, magazines are on the way out. Social media has taken over big time and very fast. The newspapers, you're not going to see much being learned in the future, it's all online. Social media is very powerful. You've got nine billion people on Facebook alone. If you do this again, I would highly suggest you go Facebook, because the social media are out. And possibly a newsletter going out to everybody. I know it's kind of expensive to send out those, those votes, but a regular envelope here can be that expensive to do. Other ways and means of getting them worded out than what you did before.
And I did, and a couple of other comments I heard, you know, we had the, the outside of the building, you know, the rendering of that, what it was going to look like, but we didn't do, in my, you know, what I heard is they didn't know what the courtrooms were going to look like, the, you know, where everything was going to be when you look down into the, you know, into the building. And I heard, I heard a couple of people tell me that, you know, you know, just because we had the drawings there, what was it going to look like inside the building? So we probably should have, you know, had some more, you know, of, you know, how many square foot was going to be, which a lot of people don't know.
I really don't think that people would.
Well, see, but I heard the other thing, I, that's.
Safety, safety would be my biggest concern.
And we tried to sell that.
Safety. The environment you have now for the people that are in here is very unsafe. I don't want prisoners escaping and getting out in the public, at least not guarded anyway, you know.
Okay.
Well, thank you for your comments and I know you and Teresa were at some of the meetings that we had.
Yeah.
And of course, that's something, you know, really, it would have been great to have more people turn out at those, but anyway, but thank you, your concern.
One more thing, one more thing. I'm not going to name names, but when the petition to get a vote in place, when they're out soliciting business and telling lies to the people, to the businesses, is that a criminal offense or is that, what is that exactly?
Well, we have our attorney here, but, but there is some.
Let's ask him, because I, I heard some bad stories out there.
It's not a criminal offense, it's just an ugly rumor that people choose to, to spread. It's like your shirt said, they only hate us and people hate the hate and so sometimes that's what happens. Misinformation gets put out, it's not a criminal offense.
So you have a person that's soliciting signatures to get a vote on the ballot, that's giving misinformation to those people, that's not, you can do that?
Well, it's not a criminal offense, the document says what it says. So a person signing a document, it has the language on there. Now, if they're falsifying that language, that's different. If they hand it to you and say, here, are you tired of paying taxes? How about doing this, sign this, and this one can get defeated or whatever it is, whatever bill they want to use. That's their bill, but the reading, the writing is right on there for them to decide.
So a person will submit a signature request for a ballot, business employees, whatever, and totally say something totally different to that what's on the page?
Well, they can, you don't have any way of governing it. You don't have any way of controlling it.
I'm just asking questions, I don't know.
There were.
I mean, to me, it's totally wrong.
Yeah, I mean, it's a kind of an ethical type issue and there were a few people that mentioned to me that they felt intimidated enough that they felt they should sign because it was just awkward for them to refuse the signature. And I'm sure there's some that refused a signature just because they, you know, they're going to cast their opinions at, on the ballot box and that's the way they're going to handle it. So, but it is difficult, you know, it's just.
And I know that can be done, so I don't, I don't like that.
But yeah, that is an unfortunate part and that's where it's important that we get out factual information and, you know, hopefully people recognize that. Okay, well, thank you.
Can I say a few words, Lynn?
Well, sure.
We were a little bit of a disadvantaged as, as commissioners or us promoting this project. We can present facts to people, but we couldn't actively go out and campaign for the project. You know, our limit was kind of much just presenting facts to the public and let them make up their minds. So we were a little disadvantaged, I think, because we, we couldn't counter some of the things that were being said. We tried to counter by stating the facts, but you know, so, and I guess, I've kind of challenged people to talk to me and, and I don't get too many people that want to talk to me about this. I did get one person that asked me and apparently the, the thinking that got out there was, you know, that we were dramatically going to increase the mill levy, which was, was not true. And when I came on as a commissioner, I felt like I wanted to bring as much common sense to the, to the job and be, promote efficiency in operations. And the way we're operating right now with this facility is not the most efficient way of doing it. And like I say, it, it's hard to do, some people say, well, you fix this and you could fix that. Well, it's kind of hard to piecemeal things. We could say that we're going to come in and renovate and update the courthouse here, but five years later, then we build the jail. Well, doing two separate projects would cost us a lot more money than doing the combined. And so I was looking at the combined project of, of updating the courthouse here with the jail and that's kind of how this Justice Center project, like I say, we felt like for the taxpayer's dollars, it would be the most beneficial to do it that way. I had put in the paper some time back when that first petition went around, of a different scenario of things that, that could happen. And I'd listed some options and I've kind of gone back through that. And basically what it says, you know, that the longer we wait to do a project, that construction costs and the possibility of interest rates increasing will only make the project get higher priced. And, and so, you know, we've delayed this project now and I had even put some figures to it, but I'm not going to mention that today. By, by doing these delays, how much it's going to cost us more in the end. So from a taxpayer standpoint, which I am a taxpayer too, and so I think I've mentioned that, you know, the longer we wait and you're either going to cut the project down considerably and then not achieve the goals of efficiency that you would want, you're going to be leaving out some things and try to cut it back to get into the same price range. So we, we kind of, like I say, the more we wait on this, down the line, you know, some people think, well, it's, we're saving tax dollars. Well, realistically, it's just the opposite, the longer you wait. Now, you can say, well, we're, we're just not going to do anything for 20 years, you know. Well, I'll, I'll be past my lifetime, so I won't ever have to pay for it, you know. And that's not really too realistic because something along the line in that 20 years, something's going to come up that, that, that will force the issue and, and then, then you're going to be doing a project that, that will probably be more expensive. So, you know, it's something, if you didn't have any problems, that would be fine, but we, we've already identified and the needs that we, that we need to run efficiency here. And like I say, the longer we wait, we're just not, really, we're not solving that problem. And I think I did mention something, you know, it's, the longer, you know, if you have a problem and you do nothing about it, bad things happen and it ends up costing you more money. And I've kind of learnt that through my lifetime, that mistakes that I've made, that I look back on and said, you know, I wish, I, I knew the problem was there, I didn't do anything about it, now I'm, now it's costing me. So, you know, it's just one of those things that I feel like this situation is, kind of falls under that same, same scenario and.
And they've never done that too.
Most of us are, along the lines, you live long enough, you, you, sometimes you do kind of learn some things that, you know, it's, but anyway, it, we, we don't know, like I say, and some people will say now, well, we don't want you to bring it back up, this people have spoken and reelection got defeated, you know, and they're saying, well. So I think we've got a tremendous amount of work to do to get more information out, apparently, and like I say, I, I don't know. Until we bring it up to reelection again, you know, it just, it's kind of hard to, we can't proceed on until we get an election and, and get it passed.
Okay, it's my turn.
Okay.
I'm Teresa Ryan, 1312 Southwest Second Street in Abilene, Kansas. I didn't know that it needed to be a vote. The only reason it came to a vote were those two gentlemen that were over there at the civic center. It doesn't need to be a vote, does it? We have elected you three to take care of us in our county and this is in our county and you can do what you deem necessary for the health and welfare of everyone in this county. And that includes the people that work in this courthouse. No, it's not crumbling yet, but let's not let it get to that. Let's take care of it. Let's take care of our responsibilities. Let's take care of our sewer systems. Nobody, I remember what, I don't know how many years ago it was, that, that. Nobody, I remember what, I don't know how many years ago it was, that the community center out there was voted "damn" two or three times. The commissioners went ahead and built it, and now we have a beautiful facility. Do we not want this to continue to be a beautiful facility like it was, built 61 years, 61, two years ago? It was beautiful then, let's make it beautiful again, and make it to where you don't walk in and go, "Ew, what's that smell?" No. And you don't have to worry about county being sued because of something that happened in that jail, and I don't know if you three know how much that cost the county, do you?
No.
Well, you need to look into it, because it cost the county a lot, didn't it?
But which?
The last person that was, the last person that died in that jail cost the county quite a bit, because we didn't have the correct cameras, appropriate cameras at the time.
I guess that's, and just the point you're referencing, you know, part of our job involves risk management, and having, doing that, it's not just insurance, it's just a matter of keeping a safe environment and trying to anticipate and doing all we can do, kind of a preventive type situation. But the other thing, and I'll just, early part of your question, there is a provision when we did vote through the Public Building Commission for this project, there is a provision in there that by petition, it can go to a vote, and so-
But it doesn't need to.
Well, but that's a procedural part that was in there, and, you know, it does raise the issue, you know, should we vote on whether, a public vote on whether a bridge should be built? Should this, you know, I mean, California kind of went down that road, where all of a sudden you had initiatives.
And look where California is.
And so, you know, there is a line there, but anyway, you know, we just, basically, we need to hear from the public. I don't see a timeline right now on this project coming back. As a commission, we need to discuss that on when and what the timing would be, and we're going to be gathering some additional information, but it's not something that we're prepared, at least I'm not, to do that in the immediate future, as far as not this year.
Wait five years.
And there's just-
Five years, we're in here.
And there's just four months, you know, there's just, we don't have that much left before we finish out this year, but at some point, we will bring it up for a discussion, and we will, you know, in a very organized manner, get some public input, whether it's a town hall meeting or going to various communities, but we, you know, we've continued to hear comments, just like you've made, and actually from both sides. It's still a topic of discussion, and as I mentioned earlier, we still have some of the situations we have to deal with, and, you know, renovation of this building, risk management, safety, courtrooms and so on. I mean, we've identified all of the problems and concerns, I think, and it's like you mentioned, you know, maybe the marketing and getting the word out, so.
Maybe we just need to put plastic and duct tape all over the outside of the windows in the wintertime, people will go, "Ooh, what's that look like?"
Yeah. Okay, well, I appreciate, yeah, I thank you for your point of view and-
Oh, I-
And comments, and, you know, it's important to keep the discussion going, because it's, you know, brings it, keeps it kind of on, we're trying to push it to a back burner, so.
Please don't.
Okay. Now, we're ready for reports of our county officers, and Janelle, you're filling in today for Brad, and so would you give us your update, please?
Sure, just a couple things going on in the county. The Environmental Services Department is spraying Johnson grass this week, and they'll start spraying trees. The Highway Department will, their sign that they have is going to be out for the Chisen Trail 150th celebration, and also utilized by Chapman for their Labor Day celebration. The Highway Department completed skim coating on South Washington here in Abilene, they did that on Monday. We went out for a bid for diesel fuel. Robson was the low bidder at 2.012. The other bid was MKC at 2.0276. And we will be posting an RFP, a Request for Proposals for Audit Services, for our audit for 2017. That'll go on our website, we'll put something in the paper with regard to that, and then send out the proposals, so we can have a decision made before the end of the year for a new audit firm.
Okay, very good.
Question, between here and Enterprise, anything Maybach share?
I did not hear anything reported.
I've seen some states out there when I come in that way, so I haven't given-
They haven't said anything to me about that.
Okay. Doug?
Actcel is still moving forward, that process is going with, serves the process upon those individuals and banking institutions and so forth, so that process is still moving forward and I don't know anything else.
Okay. Now we'll go on to notices and communications, and there's only a couple. OCCK of Adesina has a pamphlet they put together, and it gives us updates and tells us what they're doing, and of course, Dixon County is in their service area, and it also mentioned that one of the local people here is retiring, Nancy Stork, from OCCK, and she was an independent living specialist. And so not only do they serve this area, but it's kind of a reminder that there's people in this area that work with OCCK or have in the past, and we also have Jane Foltz as our representative on that board. We also have a newsletter from, on county news, and it doesn't have anything about this one, because it's dated a number of days ago, but, but, you know, remember, and I'm sure the next one's going to have quite a bit about Houston, and, you know, the counties and the cities and the states, and, I mean, everybody works together, and I see where their counties down there will be dealing with FEMA, and so, anyway, I'm sure we'll have a lot to read about that at one of our next meetings. Any other communications that anybody has received, you'd want to bring up at this We did not have any resolutions or any other business? Is there a motion for adjournment?
I'll second it.
Have the motion and second for adjournment? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned.